Okay. Good evening, John. Good evening and welcome back to the April 12th, 2022 meeting of the Santa Monica City Council. I apologize for the delay and I also apologize for the fact that we are having audio problems. So, excuse me, so if you want to watch the meeting, you can go to our website, to our site online, to watch the meeting from the city's website. You also can join the meeting online to observe at https://primetime.blujeans.com/a2m/live/eyezzzppw. And all of this is on our website where our agenda usually resides. Finally, there's a phone number that you can call if you wish to listen to the meeting. And I would grab a pencil for this because, or pen, because the PIN is a little long. And this is also on the website, but again, if you want to listen to this by phone, the number is 415-466-7000. And the PIN is seven digits. It is 4627113. And again, if you weren't able to write down this information, it's on the website. I will repeat the phone number as we move along. But I should say it's really nice to be back in chambers and welcome to all of the faces out here. It's really nice to see you all and we're happy to be here and we're happy to have you back. Councilmember Brock. Give me your mic.
Sorry, is there any way that IT can put a scroll up of that phone number on the bottom of the screen so people can see it? Or is this like typing a closed caption or something?
It would be on the Bluetooth screen, on the Bluetooth.
Do you understand what I'm saying? That way, or the city TV screen?
Yeah, because we have captioning on the city TV, on BlueJeans. No, this is just a, right, this is.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so people will find out, we'll try to scroll, but in the meantime, it is on the city web, where our agendas reside. So, and I'll repeat the phone number once again, 415-466-7000, PIN 4627113. Okay. Now, we're back from closed session on the first two hours, city attorney, and ask if we have any things to report out.
We have two items to report. Item 1A, conference with legal counsel Otto Hasselhoff versus City of Santa Monica. In 2018, plaintiff Otto Hasselhoff purchased landmark property at 2009 La Mesa Drive from Greg Riles. The property was the former residence of actress Catherine Grayson. In November 2010, the Landmarks Commission found that the property was a city landmark. This action seeks to invalidate the 2010 landmarking decision on various grounds, as well as a 2013 settlement agreement. The action claims that the city's recording of the 2013 settlement agreement lowered the value of the property in warranted damages. The city obtained favorable rulings dismissing one cause of action. Parties have mediated the claim and negotiated a monetary, a non-monetary settlement. In Broad Stroves, Hasselhoff will agree to a stipulated judgment dismissing the slender of title claim with prejudice in exchange for the city agreeing to modify the 2013 settlement to reflect that the prior code violations have been remedied, which they have, the reference permits have been finalized, which they have, and any prior releases in the 2013 settlement will not impair their appeal. Second item to report out on is item 1E. On March, this is.
Excuse me. Yeah. So, may I have a motion to approve that?
Move.
Yeah, moved by Davis, seconded by Brock. Now that we're back in, can we, I know we need to do, but can we do, can we do an acclamation again now? Okay, I'm just saying.
We can for the other.
Yeah. Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Brock.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so that passes six to zero. And now we're on to our consent count.
Yes, all the other items were heard, no reportable action on the other items.
Oh, and now we do travel, right? Sure, so councilmember Brock and I, on the weekend of April 1st, we attended the Independent Cities Association Winter Seminar. The main focus of ICAs is to bring elected officials together to focus on public safety, education, infrastructure, and intergovernmental relationships. We attended sessions and heard updates on what is happening in other member cities from fire departments on how they are adapting and responding to calls for service and had a wonderful keynote speaker, John Hee. He's an affordable housing builder from New Life Economic Development. He's also an attorney and he's also someone that has been fiercely fighting, if you will, at the SB 9, SB 10. But he was a wonderful, wonderful speaker. I also had an opportunity to moderate a panel discussion on crisis management and the election decision. Anybody else?
Um, microphone.
This is when the audience is here.
I attended that, I saw people here, I know how loudly I speak. I think Christie did a remarkable job of talking about the conference. I want to highlight Michael Schellenberger, who had just written a book on the homeless situation in San Francisco. He went in depth on homelessness, on drug addiction, extremely informative. That was our first seminar of the day and that set the tone for me. We were in seminars for approximately nine hours that day. I was pleased that we were both with council members from our neighboring cities, from Beverly Hills, from Culver City, from Torrance, from Redondo, Manhattan Beach, et cetera. So, it gave us also a chance to talk to each other about the shared issues in our cities. So, I was very grateful and I thank the city council for this conference.
Thank you, councilmember Brock. And now we can move to the city managers.
Good evening, mayor and council. And welcome to our employees and members of the public. Really excited to have our first meeting in person. And for me, this is my absolute first meeting in person as your city manager, so very exciting. Oh, and for many, I'm joined with many others, just this is exciting. So, a few things I want to report on. First, we learned last Friday of the US Postal Service's decision to stop providing mail service to our residents in the 1300 block of 14th Street. And I want to thank the city council, I want to thank our police department, I want to thank our Office of Communications for immediately jumping into action and addressing the situation. Very pleased to report that as of today, the post office is delivering mail back onto the 1300 block of 14th Street. And we are working very hard with the post office to mitigate this from happening again and to establish much better communications with them so that we can support our residents should they decide to take such a decision without working with us in the future. Second of all, I want to really give a big shout out to David Martin and Jennifer Taylor in our Community Development Department. We've been working really hard, you know, one of council's top goals is to really move forward with an inclusive, equitable economic recovery. And one of the things we've been doing is really trying to uplift and celebrate the businesses that are coming to Santa Monica. And over the past year, we've seen about 750 new businesses establish themselves in the city. Really exciting and I'm really thankful for their efforts to help promote and elevate the businesses coming to town, obviously to buy local, support your local schools, support city services. So, it's really important that we get behind our small business community and support them. And then lastly, I'll just conclude with a spirit of celebration. Just want to wish everyone in our community a happy Passover and to all of council as well, a happy Passover and a happy year. So, thank you very much and I will conclude my comments for tonight.
Thank you, city manager. And we have chips, I'm sorry, so how many, right. So, wait, I, you didn't give me the chips though, right? Oh, where?
So, we have Denise Barton and we have Tom Alley.
Oh, I see, thank you, Mary. Oh, how cool was that? Oh, good God. I was looking for paper. Okay, Ms. Barton, welcome. Oh, I can do that. Here you go.
Good evening. Let's start with the city manager refusing to return my calls about the planning department slipping the steps to see if alterations will negatively affect affordable housing. Of course, I'm referring to the bright lights which intrude through my apartment to the front wall at the NIVC building, as well as the raising of the building, closing the balcony areas, restricting airflow to the affordable housing unit. And all of this was done under administrative approval process. For our city manager, aka executive director of the Housing Authority, is this supposed to be an example of how little you care about affordable housing tenants within the city when the administrative approval process goes against the municipal plan, municipal code, and the downtown municipal plan and HUD regulation? And the only thing I've heard about this is from a neighbor who's someone who worked at NIVC called and gave an email address. For our city manager, aka executive director of the Housing Authority, I hope you understand I have no authority to affect the city's administrative protocol. So, why is this coming back to me? Isn't city staff responsible to address this issue, not me? Unless, of course, it was done intentionally done to retaliate against me for speaking at city council and other board and commission meetings. I ask because there's been no resolution of the issue and I've been talking about it for how long now? Another example of how the city discriminates against seniors and students disabled. Base Farm Management tried to turn off the elevator, turn the elevator off over the weekend in February, but I believe code compliance came out and that was avoided. And last Thursday night, the elevator was turned off, Friday day it was on, and Friday night it was turned off again for the weekend. And this time code compliance said they don't do elevators.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Barton.
Thanks. I've assembled some photos the last couple days and last week, which you can see, and I've asked Denise to go through them. Good evening. City manager, maintaining safety for those of us in Santa Monica and our property are your job. Everything else you speak about tonight will pale in importance. By continuing to keep the garage dumpster rooms open all night for the homeless, the drug dealers, the sex workers, and the tigers who take refuge there, you are contributing to the growing crime and assaults in the city. You are dishonoring the homeless, the residents, businesses, and yourself. Your ignoring our request to not close dumpster rooms at night is not compassionate. It's not right. I have brought you two letters from infectious disease doctors who warn us of possible spread of disease in the urine, the feces, the vomit, syringes, lice, garbage, not to mention the increased time and money spent on additional maintenance. We have 911, but we have no proactive security or law enforcement from midnight to 7:00 AM. How many more fighters, attacks, and break-ins do you consider normal? I don't think you care about the homeless, honestly, or the quality of life for our residents. Eighty-six percent who do not come to the Palmonade. We're under attack. What's the game plan? Want a completely vacant Palmonade downtown? We're losing, we're losing small and large tenants due to filthy conditions and you're trying to take away garages. Please sidetrack once or twice a week and venture into the garages and elevates. Please, please get educated on this. Count how many people are asleep. Count how many people are asleep alongside their own bodily fluids. And if DHSM refuses to do so, would you please pick up the phone tonight and remove the abandoned swing set that's in garage five?
Thank you, Mr. Alley, your time is up.
I'm going to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? So now we move to the consent count.
Under all items will be considered and approved in one motion unless removed by a council member for discussion. In accordance with Charter Section 615, the adoption of all ordinances and resolutions shall be by reading of title only unless a council member present disents. And I ask if the council would like to combine the city council and the housing authority items as they are being heard under the consent.
Yes, please.
Okay, I would like to ask that Housing Authority Board Member Cochran, please come and join on the line. And while she's coming up, let me announce that city council members should get paid $50 a sitting as a housing authority. Let me call the rolls. Authority member Kara?
Here.
Authority member Davis?
Here.
Authority member Brock?
Here.
Authority member Dale Torrey?
Here.
Chair Mayor Tim McCowen?
Here.
Chair Hemrich?
Here.
And Housing Authority Board Member Cochran?
Here.
Okay, so we have three speakers who request to speak on this. And the speakers are Am He? We have Am He, Denise Barton, Theresa Marasco.
Got it. I see Kim V on mine. Okay, good. Okay, thank you. So in the order that I have you. Wait, but I don't have, oh, good, okay. So Am?
You can only give donations for one person, but you can only have a total of four minutes to speak. Okay, and firmly not for Theresa, because she doesn't need her time. Okay, so, I'm sorry, who's donating? Who's donating time? And you are, you're Kim? Okay. So Kim, you donated two minutes to?
Aunt Bonawala, is that right?
Okay, good, okay, I got it. Okay, so let's, um, okay, fine. Ms. Bonawala, hold on, I'm going to turn your mic on, and now let's hear it.
And just one other clarification before I start. I just want to make sure that I can finish whatever sentence I'm in before I get cut off.
As long as it's not to be run on.
Well, it's just.
I get a sentence, go ahead.
I know what a sentence is, you know what a sentence is.
I know what a sentence is.
Okay, so great. Okay, so now I'm ready, Denise. Thank you. So, hi, everybody. I am talking about this particular item because my concern is, and I'm going to use an analogy. So, wait, you're in the Ocean Park neighborhood. Am I right? So it's nothing about you, it's just about giving an idea. So every neighborhood has an association. And anybody in that neighborhood can join their neighborhood association. And the city of Santa Monica supports those neighborhood associations, and I think it's wonderful. I have mine, we all have ours. But imagine if you were in a neighborhood association, and you were told, hey, you've got a neighborhood association board. And, you know, you can't talk to that board, you can't commune with that board, you're no real community. In fact, you don't know whether your neighbor is a part of that board, or you don't know what that board is actually doing, so they speak for you. And you should be good, feel good about that. I don't think you'd feel good about that. I wouldn't feel good about that if my board said that. But here we are in a situation where we've got a resident advisory board, thank you very much for stepping up and doing that. But no one can come and talk to you or have a conversation about the plan. And so I'm here to advocate for a website and a way for the city to put people together who are lowing on folks, who have lots to share, who know how to make something better because they're living through this process that we have at the housing authority. So what better way to do that? That would be to facilitate, to fund some money so that these people can put a website together, communicate, figure out what's working, what's not working, talk about the plan, and come to these meetings about the plan annually, and really be able to put stuff together and say, this is what we think we need to do. And I'm saying this because I've been through the process of helping people get housing here in Santa Monica. I've been and advocate particularly for women, particularly for older disabled women. And I know that the process is broken, and I can't do anything about it. And I'd like people to have the agency to do something about it. So I'm asking you to fund people. And we're talking about 3.3% of Santa Monica's population here. We're talking about 1,700 households, voucher households, who should be able to communicate with one another. They know what the struggle is. They should be able to talk about that struggle. They should be able to fix the problems that exist with, because there are always going to be problems. And there's always going to be a solution. And the people who know how to figure out where the problems are and make the suggestions are the people that we're serving. They don't have an opportunity to meet with each other, and they need to have that opportunity. So I need you to fund something, not that the city runs, not that staff needs to get involved, they don't. They need to facilitate the initial ability to put the message out there to say, hey, we've got a resident advisory board, we're going to hold some meetings like neighborhood groups hold their meetings. And, you know, join our, come, join, we've got this website. Come talk to us, we're going to host meetings at the library. We're going to host meetings, you know, at the Ken Edwards Center. Come, fund this, fix this problem. Because no one else is going to do it but you guys. And you wouldn't be satisfied if you were sitting in this position and not know who else is sitting in your position. Who else can I talk to who knows this stuff? I need some help, and I'm not getting it from where I need to go. But I know there are people out there who've been through this. I'm going to talk, I want to talk to them, I don't have any.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Next up is Denise Barton, and then we have Theresa Marasco. Hold on, wait, there's your mic, now start, sorry.
Good evening. Let's address the annual plan of the Santa Monica Housing. Starting with there were no comments from the RAB Resident Advisory Board. Would that be because the Santa Monica Housing Authority created a farcical RAB to have control over it, and when information got out, which would not reflect well upon the Santa Monica housing authority? In addition, the Santa Monica Housing Authority does not want Section 8 tenants to be able to organize. Because if the tenants were allowed to talk with one another, they would find they have a lot of the same problems with the Santa Monica Housing Authority, which the Santa Monica Housing Authority refuses to address or respond to, which again doesn't reflect well upon the Santa Monica Housing Authority. So one better way for the Santa Monica Housing Authority to avoid the negative exposure, but to sabotage the RAB, which is the reason no meetings are facilitated since the beginning of the sham RAB, and the reason the RAB representatives don't respond, the phone message, or email from Section 8 tenants of Santa Monica. Then did the Santa Monica Housing Authority take funding from the city having a RAB and facilitating meetings? If so, it's just another program you take funding for, the reality of some. Not to mention the ways the Santa Monica Housing Authority continues to discriminate against seniors and the disabled. Six months, the Santa Monica's affordable housing being managed by one star management company, victimizing. And you're wondering why half your housing plans are passing, really? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Ms. Marasco?
I'm starting now, right?
Yes. I'm a city named Santa Monica Housing Authority Board and city council member. I'm speaking on my own behalf as a resident advisory board member and not as vice chair of the housing commission. I object to the approval of the annual and administrative plans because the resident advisory board has had no opportunity to meet and collectively respond to these plans. So they do not include the voices of over 1,600 voucher holders in the city. In more than 14 years, the RAB has never been allowed to meet. To this day, RAB members have no way to contact each other. Voucher holders live in scattered individual housing throughout the city, and staff continues to intentionally prevent RAB members from communicating and holding meetings with quite numerous requests, some of which you have heard over the past two years. You, the Housing Authority Board, are the policymaking body, and yet you never established the Santa Monica Resident Advisory Board. Never codified what qualifies a person to be a member of the RAB, who the RAB reps are, how many there are, how they are selected or elected, the length of their terms of their responsibility. Most of these decisions were never made, and any that were were not issued by you, the policymaking body. Instead, any decisions have been made by city support staff without any public process or input. I request that you direct staff immediately schedule and notice the first RAB meeting. And your next meeting, your endeavor to codify the details with a proper policymaking process. Ms. Cochran, I thank you for being here this evening. And even though you are a RAB member and were selected as a representative, you do not represent my views as a RAB member. I have never been able to reach you, and I've sent you emails. And I've also sent emails to Donna Brown and Nina wanted you to have ever returned my email message.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Marasco. And that ends the public comment. Now, are there items that councilmembers want to pull from the consent calendar? Councilmember Dale Torrey?
I wanted to make a comment to the public comments that were just made regarding the resident advisory board meetings. I wonder from staff, like, how long would it take for us to put this first meeting together? I mean, what I'm hearing is that we haven't had one?
So we have to pull the item. We're talking, this was just all of the consent calendar items. Are you pulling this?
I'm pulling items.
Okay.
So I'd like to pull 3C, 3E, 3I.
And does anyone else want to pull any other consent items?
3D?
Didn't say 3C.
3C, 3E, and 3I. So is that, okay, so will somebody move the remainder of the?
I move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Uh, moved by Davis, and I, Dale Torrey's seconding. Moved by Davis, seconded by Dale Torrey. Roll call both, please.
Okay, so 3I, just to let you guys know. 3I is the housing authority item?
Yes.
But we still have minutes on here, so I'm going to go ahead and do the poll. Authority councilmember Kara?
Yes.
Authority councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Chair Mayor Tim McCowen?
Yes.
Authority councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Authority councilmember Dale Torrey?
Yes.
Chair Mayor Hemrich?
Yes, and so what we're going to do is move to reorder the consent agenda. Yes, and so do we need to vote on, can we, by acclamation, may we hear 3I first, council? Yes, by acclamation.
Great, so 3I.
And do we have, do you want a staff report? I assume you do.
I think so, because it's a somewhat complicated issue. And I don't have my microphone on, so let me start over. Yes, I think so, because I think this is somewhat of a complicated issue that residents need to have clarification on, and we as a council need to have clarification on. So yes. A report, please.
And can I, well, one clarification, one more, I think there's kind of two issues at play. One is on the agenda, and city attorney, please correct me, is the actual admin plan. But then there's other discussions about the advisory board, which I think is separate from the agendized items. I just want to figure out, you want us to talk about it? Either advisory board piece of it, or the admin?
And also to be clear, what's agendized is the consideration of the admin plan. So extensive discussion on the RAB would not be appropriate on the agenda because it has not been noticed as the formation or the procedures or the operation of the RAB. So I think they can make cursory, you know, cursory questions about, was the RAB involved? Because that's part of the admin plan. But as far as the organization of the RAB, it's beyond the closed session agenda. I'm sorry, the open session agenda.
Isn't, isn't a participant engagement or resident input?
That's what I'm saying. So the question's about asking whether the RAB was involved, that's part of the administrative plan process. But to the extent that the questions go to, how should the RAB be formed? What should that process be? That gets into the organization of the RAB, which was not noticed. So all I'm saying is to give proper notice so that others can participate in that process, then it should be, it should come back.
Yeah. And I feel that this is interconnected. And I don't think we can approve the administrative plan without actually, without in addition, having a full discussion on the resident advisory board that, that at least some residents feel has been put off not only for a month or two months, but for years. So I would rather table this discussion, table this item, come back, rework it, and come back with a full discussion of the resident advisory board and the administrative plan. Because I know I wouldn't be able to build on the administrative plan without also talking about the resident advisory board. So I move that we table the item.
Can I second?
Can I, staff, is there a deadline we need to file the administrative plan by?
So we do have a deadline. I think that the other thing is that although this is an act of, the administrative plan actually was, and there was a staff report to the housing authority. And there was no objection to passing this plan at the, I'm sorry, the housing condition. There was no objection, comments were solicited, and no one said this should not be passed because the RAB is inadequate.
Yeah, and I just don't want to, I don't want to be misunderstood. In other words, you could ask questions about the public process and the involvement of the RAB in the, like, the noticing process and their input and so forth, or whether they didn't get input. But some of the comments were going towards, you know, the frequency of the RAB meetings and, you know, the initiation of the RAB meeting. And that's, that's all I was commenting on. Because that's the part that was not noticed.
So we have a motion that's been seconded at the table. What is the, if I could ask the housing administrator, what is the penalty for not turning in that plan on April 17? Is there a penalty?
Well, that's a good question. The federal government is our, is the oversight body of this because it's a federal program. They could withhold funds, they, for example.
So we don't really know.
Well, I'm saying, I think they have, they have wide discretion when we're not in compliance with.
So Mike, okay, then, how, how do we? We've heard this before, we've heard this six months ago, eight months, from residents. And it may be a small group of residents. But I know that wherever there's a small group speaking, there's probably more people. behind them that aren't coming to meetings and aren't speaking right then. My question is, can we rectify the concerns tonight in that administrative plan that allow the residents who want a Resident Advisory Board, who want meetings, can we include that in the administrative plan then tonight so that I don't proceed with trying to table the motion? Or table the item?
Let me just say that we have another representative, a real representative from the Resident Advisory Board here who has not complained and perhaps we ought to ask her if she is concerned about the communication. I think you're making a lot of assumptions based on three pieces of oral testimony. And, and while I think that this may be an issue we should deal with in the future, I don't see it as a reason to hold up our entire Housing Authority Annual Administrative Plan tonight. I mean, this is an issue we can deal with.
And my only, my only feeling is that I've heard since I joined the council and before I joined the council that this keeps getting put off. So I'd like us to find a way to rectify any more delays on it. So I guess what I'm asking from the Housing Administration, is there a way to incorporate resident concerns? And obviously, yes, I welcome your input as well, but. No, she's got that. But, but my question is, rather than have to bring it back then, since the RAB is part of the administrative plan, correct, Susan?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we can achieve, probably achieve some without a protracted discussion. I think what they're asking is, how do we get to the two or three objections, I think Anna Walla mentioned those as a member of the public a little while ago? How do we try and solve some of those problems and still get your administrative plan on time instead of asking HUD for an extension?
I think one, one thing the council or the Housing Authority Board could do, to be pointed out that there are no proposed changes to the current policies that we have. So one thing the council could do is to approve the existing plan and direct staff that they would like to return with an agenda item to talk about the Resident Advisory Board.
How do we do that without, I guess, what?
You say?
Without, how do I do that without undue delay on the part of the staff? Because I know you were before us last year and I think I asked somebody the same question. So that's my question is how do we, can you come back thirty days from now?
I believe that what you do is you say, I'd like to make a motion and then give directions to staff. And then you ask our city manager and staff how long it would take to come back with a study session or proposal relating to this item. But rather than rejecting the item, I think that it's better to move that we accept, that we approve the plan and staff come back.
Right, because it's not a simple matter of just adding something to the plan and submitting it. It's something that you have to vote on because you have to decide how do you want to structure it? Because there are various ways of doing it, some of which are more resource intensive than not. So that is why the suggestion to come back with direction would get you what you want, which is so that you can have that discussion so that you can decide how you want the RAB to be formed. But it won't hold up the plan because realistically, you would have to actually decide how you would want the RAB to be formed before it could go into the plan. So it's not a simple matter of just adding some words to the plan and then submitting it. It won't be timely and it would be risking basically noncompliance with, you know, a technical deadline that is is, is subject to review by HUD.
And a lot of federal funding.
Yes, funding is on the line.
I hear you. I just want to make sure if we do this, that this does not extend because it seems like extended
You have control still. You have, you've had control and you continue to have control. You just need to use your words to say, I would like to have you come back and talk about. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
What, what, yeah, we'll.
I'm sorry. Okay, Christine, please. I'm sorry, there's no way unless you signal the man.
I'm bad, but you guys keep going back and forth. I have a simple question. I had a question. So, it's part of the plan. Thank you so much for being here. So part of the plan, it said that there was committee input and it says that city staff solicited input from the board. And so were you on the board already between January and March?
Yes, I was, I had been on the board, but I really haven't had a lot of input. Mr. Kimber has been sending me, you know, the information that they have put together and I have read it over, you know, trying to understand and the questions that I've had, I have addressed to him. And this is only my second meeting. So, you know, I'm trying to get it all together and put it in my head, but no. I have not been to a Housing Authority Board meeting per se since I have been a member.
Just wanted to understand, you know, you know, if, if, you know, like, your input in terms of this plan, if you had any suggestions.
No, I didn't. No, I didn't. To answer your question, no.
Councilmember, maybe it would help the gym, could you just explain how the input process for this works? Just, and just leave you a high level of, and I think it'll set up the future discussion. Well, just so you can explain kind of what the status quo currently is, just for background.
Thank you. I will do that. And I want to, it may have to start with some general context too about the Resident Advisory Board. The original federal regulations were set up for housing authorities that actually own and operate public housing. It is quite a different context when the housing authority is both your landlord and your voucher administrator. But, but, but I did recognize in interpreting those regulations that, yes, they would want, what are called voucher-only housing authorities, which is what Santa Monica has. They would want those voucher holders to have input into their, into the housing authority's policy plans. We, the way we currently set up the housing, the, sorry, the Resident Advisory Board was informed by two main, two key things that we had. One, we wanted to create the lowest barrier possible to our voucher holders providing input because the RAB's role is actually to provide input to staff, not to the Housing Authority Board per se. And then the responsibility is upon the staff to consider those, if there are proposing recommendations, consider those and either we agree those and here's why, or say we disagree and here's why, and make those recommendations to the Housing Authority Board. And, and the low barrier we're talking about is, it's, here's our plan, here's our policies. Email us or mail us your input. That's the barrier. Or that, you know, that is the bar, a fairly low bar. The other main consideration we have is, as I say, it's not, not everybody on the voucher program feels comfortable in a public setting and kind of outing themselves as, hey, I'm on. But what still is, is a stigma about being on public assistance. And so we wanted to provide them a way to provide direct input to staff to say, here's our ideas because once we get that input, we are, it is our responsibility to respond to them in, in a public way that then comes back to the Housing Authority Board. And anytime we have input, we will create a sheet, it's not attribution by, who did it, saying, here's the idea that was raised. We agree or disagree. In, in operating the way we currently have the Resident Advisory Board, we directly contacted by email, if that was their preference, or paper mail, if that was their preference. Not only the thirteen hundred Section Eight voucher households who consist of the Resident Advisory Board, but there's three hundred other households in our other voucher programs that, that the RAB and the federal regulations doesn't even address in this context of, of Section Eight. And so we think about that as the broadest way, the most inclusive way to provide direct access to staff. But if the council decides at a later time or at a certain that they would like to do more with respect to the RAB, they would be, staff would like to come back during the budget regulations in May, June and say, here are some models to consider, here's the financial information.
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry. Can I, can I, can me or? Okay, just thank you very much. I appreciate, you know, the work that staff is doing to engage our residents. And I, and I do understand the, the challenges with some, some people not, maybe want to participate in public forums. There was a suggestion by, by a speaker earlier, discuss a website and such sort of other channels, you know, where it's not totally public, but an opportunity for people to engage. And I, I wonder if that exists in other cities? Is that a best practice? Have you ever heard of something similar to that, some type of platform where people can communicate, engage without being in a public setting?
It's certainly an idea. I will tell the council and the Housing Authority Board, we are barred by federal law from disclosing to anybody, either confirming somebody is or is not on a federal assistance program. And so we can't just publish the names of everybody and say, hey, get together if you'd like. And so that's, that's one of the challenges. I think we'd have to, we'd have to do the work that is a multi-step process of, hey, anybody who wants to have your email shared with a group of other people, let us know. You know, that kind of thing. And that is not something that is a, you know, it's something that can be done easily. So we would want to consider resources.
Okay, so there's ways to think about that. I was thinking even maybe neighborhood groups might be able to, as part of their grantee, that, you know, when we provide grants to the neighborhood groups, that they might be able to announce to their, you know, members for those who want to participate in that type of platform, you know. I'm sure as we brainstorm sort of how we might be able to do that, it sounds like there's, there's a need for a more robust engagement process and, or maybe it's just the fact that, you know, the, the Resident Advisory Board hasn't met for a while, you know, and, and so people are wanting to see that come back online. So anyway, but I appreciate that you are doing some outreach and, and I, I do hope that we can, we can figure out, you know, a, a good balance of, of engagement for residents that participate in our voucher programs.
Actually, one more thing that helps the council board is that the, we give the same weight to any input that we provided in, in the process about the housing authority policies and programs. So it, it's the same way whether it's a group of three or seven or one. So that might be part of the consideration about resources.
Yes, Councilmember Davis. Oh, I'm sorry. You need your mic.
I had a couple, I've gone all year without having that problem. I have a couple of questions that may help me and may help residents understand a little bit better. So I understand Inglewood, Norwalk, other cities do have frequent RAB meetings of residents who, who are on those programs who want to participate in the meetings. Is that true? Because I thought you said you didn't know of any cities that have meetings?
No, no, I did not say that. I will, I will, the council, we have been in contact and conferred with HUD for every step of the way in regarding to how we form the RAB, how we engage, how we engage the RAB members in order to provide input. What we were told by HUD is that some housing authorities will do that. Yes, they'll give out a notice to a thousand of their voucher holders and say, we're going to hold this public meeting. Four or six people will, will show up and the, and the housing authority, you know, gets a claim that now it's, it's done this public process. Again, we feel that this is kind of direct contact with all our program participants.
What, what is the law for that? There is, do we have to make public meetings available or is that something that these residents are fabricating?
No, that's the problem. The problem is even materials that, one of the commentators submitted some written materials and if you look at it, this is the language. PHAs have discretion in determining the method of appointment of RABs as long as the RAB ensures that its RAB or RABs reflect and represent all residents assisted. And here again, Section Eight only PHAs have discretion in the RAB appointment process. The problem is that the, the federal regulations do not dictate exactly how it is formed. So to answer your question, at least on the, the research that I have done, there, there are various ways of doing it. Some of them form very similar to a housing commission. Some of them, in fact, most of the ones that I've seen are, are like that where it's more formal. And again, it really depends on the makeup because sometimes the, the housing authority has a large, you know, they have public housing and so, you know, if they have public housing, then it's a much more involved process. And that's why unfortunately there is some, not ambiguity, it's just discretion. You have discretion to decide how the RAB should be formed. And that's why the suggestion was that you could give staff direction and, you know, give you some options for that type of choice.
So I'd like to move to remove my motion to table this item. If my seconder will also agree to that.
Yes, I'll agree to that.
He's not, so what he's doing is.
We had moved to table. Yeah, that's, yes, I'm sorry, I'm withdrawing my prior motion.
Thank you.
I apologize for that.
And now you're making a motion, I assume.
I, I, well, first, I'm going to make it with direction. All right, I'll move that we approve the administrative plan and that staff returns to this body within forty-five days with a discussion of options for improving the RAB process.
That include also authorizing submission of the fiscal year 2021, 2023 annual plan?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much, Councilmember Davis.
I'll second. That's Oscar. Fine, I'll second that one. All right. Yeah, maybe we have a roll call vote. Does anyone want to discuss? No, let's have a roll call vote. You want to discuss?
Well, I just, just, but I mean, are we going to still give direction that afterwards that we will come back and discuss?
It says within forty-five days.
Okay.
Ms. Cochran, one, one question I have for you. Have you received any training since you've joined? Is there, is there any training, any resources that you think would help you make, make your job easier, something that we can do to support you?
There is, Oscar, I think some of the terminology would, would help me a lot. There were a couple of things that I need to have clarified that would help me understand some things a little bit better. And, and I know this is not the place because of this, you know, to go into that. But, but I would need some clarification on, on a couple of things. Yes, that would be a help. Thank you.
Great. Can we include also that, that staff contact Ms. Cochran and the, the director of the Housing Authority or whichever appropriate staff member exists to give her some guidance and some, some support?
But that's just additional direction.
Yeah, it's additional, yeah, just so that we can make that happen.
Yes, that's fine. And our city manager says yes, so you will be getting lots more support than you ever wanted, I promise you. Sorry, that's his fault.
That's right.
Oh, okay, I can do that.
Okay, so I, I think with that, let's take a roll call vote. Yes.
Council, Authority Number Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Chair Lieutenant McCowen.
Yes.
Council Authority Number Brock.
Yes.
Council Authority Number Dale Torrey.
Yes.
Housing Authority Board Member Cochran.
Yes.
Mayor Chair Hamerich.
Yes, and that passes seven to zero. And Ms. Cochran, thank you. I think you can go home now. I'll do that for you. And thanks. We'll see you in three months.
Next, we have item 3C. It's a ward request for proposal and interim agreement with venture APM LLC for enterprise asset management. And Councilmember Brock pulled this one.
So, so I, hi, Sonny. So I pulled this and I sent extensive questions to the city manager's office. I presume you're one of the people who answered those. So here's what I'd like. There are some residents, and I actually got this query from a number of residents, about the need to upgrade a system. Now, I look at and go, it's 20 years old? Yeah, you upgrade anything that's 20 years old. I I wouldn't be able to keep a computer for 20. Can you give a Cliff Notes version of what you sent me?
Sure.
And then I'll move to approve.
Sure, no problem. I think
Thank you so much.
The the simplest analogy I can give is, is an iPhone. Everybody uses one these days. Imagine iPhone one, and you can't have any apps. It just makes a call. To the iPhone 13 that we have today, you got apps, you can check your email, you can check your bank accounts. That's essentially what we're trying to move towards in managing our water waste, our assets. 20 years ago, when that asset was procured, it just, it's a data tracking system, and you can manually input that data in. And there's not an easy way to analyze and pull that data out. As we're moving and implementing all these new advanced treatment technology, that's kind of another construction next floor, a civic center, the plant expansion that you guys saw in January groundbreaking, all of that is not compatible with the technology, the software that was there 20 years ago. Just like the apps that you try to download on your iPhone now, you can't do that on iPhone one. It's just not compatible. So for us to better manage the assets that we're investing in, this 200-plus million assets, we need the latest and greatest software package that's catered to water and wastewater to better assist us in having a preventive amazes program of proactive management practice, part of the structure rather than a reactive.
And a follow-up, I just want to clarify, because I forgot this when I sent my request to the city manager White originally. This is enterprise fund money that cannot be transferred anywhere else that it is for the use of the water department and our water funds, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And delaying this would just put us further behind, further behind the eight ball in terms of modernization.
Correct. Like, the challenge we're going to have is the plant expansion that was done in 2010, the Sharnah Hospital Gulf Restoration Project, all those assets are not currently captured in our system because they have to be manually entered. So with these new assets being built, are design builders able to electronically load that in for us? Didn't have this. Somebody has to upload that manually as well, and we have thousands of assets with each.
So you will save staff time and be able to allocate those staff, the uses that they're going to have to manually input to other tasks within your department?
That's part of the challenge, too, is we currently don't have any dedicated staff to do this work. We have staff that fully analyze the information, but we don't have staff that manually.
Thank you so much for that explanation. I move to approve.
I hear a second. Move by Brock, seconded by Dale Torrey. Thank you, Mr. Wayne. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Parra.
Yes, so that passes six to zero. Everyone push your buttons. I forgot. Brock, Dale Torrey, button. It's there.
And the next item is 3E, approval of modification to agreement with the active networking for recreation management system. And again, this is by Councilmember Brock.
So there were privacy concerns that were expressed by several residents about this program and software system. I also asked questions prior to this meeting to staff. And I think the city manager or staff, whichever one wants to, gave a statement on this, which I thought was really efficient and hit the points perfectly. So if someone could just read that into the record for residents, then I'll move to approve.
Sure.
And I appreciate the question ahead of time. So in 2019, ActiveNet network had a breach to its Blue Bear Education platform. The city does not use the Blue Bear Software platform, and none of the city's data was compromised in that breach. Nonetheless, the city takes data security seriously, as we all know from our training, from our chief information officer, just with Chet Pala. We can assure any concerned user that ActiveNet does not share user information from Santa Monica Recreation Management System with third parties. In addition, ActiveNet must comply with the California Consumer Privacy Act, which allows users to delete their personal data from any system. And we are currently exploring how to best notify ActiveNet users at this rate.
Thank you so much. I move to approve.
I hear a second. Move by Brock, seconded by Parra. Let's have a roll call.
Parra?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant McCowen.
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Dale Torrey?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, that passes six to zero. Yes, so.
Mayor, you want to make an announcement about 5A again?
Oh, yes. So 5A is off calendar. That would be the Carl Thorpe item. We will not be discussing Carl Thorpe tonight. It was continued. One of those. And let me read the number again. If you want to listen to this meeting, because I know people are having audio problems, you can either sign in on the city website to the Bluetooth, I'm sorry, to the Blue Gene site, or dial this number for audio, 415-466-7000. The PIN number is 462-7113. Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I think we're on to seven.
Ordinances, public comment is permitted only, public comment is, sorry, public comment is permitted on ordinances for introduction and first reading. No public discussion is permitted on ordinances for second reading and adoption. Again, in accordance with part of section 617, the adoption of all ordinances and resolutions shall be by reading of the title unless, by the title only, unless the council member presents, presents dissent. 7A is introduction and adoption of an emergency interim zoning ordinance to extend interim zoning regulations of any Santa Monica municipal code, chapter 9.49 and section 9.40.020, increased thresholds for review in 100% of affordable housing projects and certain tier two housing projects subject to the Housing Accountability Act by administrative appeal. We have no speakers on this side.
Thank you. And last but not least, yeah. Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is just a very brief staff report. So this is basically coming back to the council to extend this ordinance that you had previously extended on January 25, 2022. And just to refresh on what it's about, this IZO would extend the streamlined process for co-compliant tier two housing projects on sites of less than one acre and 100% of affordable housing projects. And those would be reviewed through an administrative process, which means non-public hearing. The reason this is coming back to the council for extension is, of course, as you all know, we received a comment letter from HCD that our housing element continues to get compliance. So we need additional time through March 31 of 2023 to ensure that the city is able to continue that that process and to allow this, allow this IZO to continue because it would indicate a support housing production and also allow us to actually work through the housing element process. So you can see here just the background as to how we got to where we are. Like I said, January 25th was the last time we acted on this. And again, we're before these nights, the request for additional attention through March 31 of 2023. So we can see the same provisions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff? Loads of questions. Okay. Councilmember Parra, you want to add this?
So when I was reading the staffing report, just asking questions to better understand some of the language. So under recommended action, it said staff is asking that the thresholds for review of 100% affordable housing projects be increased. What exactly does that mean? Because they're asking for, to increase thresholds for review.
Yeah. So so currently, under the, what we call just the permanently developed code, affordable housing projects with more than 50 units are required to go through a develop or review permit process. So they go through a public hearing. This IZO removes that 50-unit cast of affordable housing projects of any size, you know, would would not require public hearing. So that's affordable, so it's 100%.
100% right. Projects where all the units are affordable, deed restricted. Question said also that the increased, that they be increased for certain tier two housing projects, subject to Housing Accountability Act. Can you also elaborate on what types of projects would fall under certain?
The tier two, so the reason we use the word certain is because someone could propose a tier two housing project that doesn't comply fully with the with the restrictions in this ordinance. So maybe they're on a site of more than one acre. Maybe they are asking for a site that is asking for a variance or a modification. So the only kinds of projects that would be allowed that that are covered under this IZO are projects that comply precisely with the zoning ordinance and are also on sites of less than one acre.
They all still have to only with the 100%?
No, no, it's two classes of projects. You know, one is projects that include only 100% affordable units, so deed restricted 100% affordable units. And then the other class could be market rate projects, so tier two market rate projects, you know, that include, that that may include affordable units in them. But, you know, they're primarily market rate projects. And as long, the only way they can qualify is they must precisely meet all of the zoning code requirements. So they cannot exceed, you know, maximum height, maximum FER, all, they must meet all of the development standards in the zoning code.
I want to have more questions. What? Councilmember Brock?
I was, I was content to let you keep asking questions. So my questions, because residents have been concerned by administrative approval. So if we tighten this somehow, because this was put in originally because of the pandemic and reduced staff, correct?
This was, it's pre-pandemic, actually. It was, we were not in the council meetings before, or, you know, the world changed when this was enacted. So it was not in response to the pandemic at all. It was actually council's direction to bring forward this IZO in anticipation of what we were seeing happening with the six cycle housing element process and the potential, you know, increase in the REIT numbers, the need to continue to support housing production and finding a way to, you know, streamline that process. Because what we were seeing was affordable housing projects, I'll just use that as an example, they're often under very, very tight funding deadlines. And, you know, there's sort of set cycles under which they may be able to apply for tax credits or what have you. And, you know, throwing a public hearing process in there, particularly when you have projects that are fully compliant with the zoning code, they have protections under the Housing Accountability Act. The city has no discretion whatsoever to deny those projects or to reduce their density. So the sort of effectiveness of that public hearing process was something that was raised as a concern at the time. And it was, and it was further expanded to also co-compliant market rate projects. So that is the history of how this was enacted. I think this slide kind of gives the rundown, you know, as to how we got to this point.
I could ask a question on, you said tier two. So the 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 100% affordable is really, and I'm still confused a little bit, but is is more mandated by the state, and we may not have any opportunity to adjust that, and we need the affordable housing. My question then turns more, no, it's not. So I guess I'm wrong, because three people shook their heads at me. So I'll need more of an explanation of that. But my question then is on the tier two projects, which are market rate and affordable combos for the most, well, they would always be. What is the harm of having those come back to the planning commission and giving residents, are there, is there any flexibility for the planning commission in excess of administrative approval to help control those projects or to have input into them rather than just ARB?
So.
That makes, I think my question is more concise.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it's probably helpful just to go back again to the Housing Accountability Act. And, you know, we we have a more expansive presentation, I think, and explanation of this in Jan, on January 25. And your report has links to that, to that staff report. Basically, the Housing Accountability Act severely restricts the city's discretion in terms of our ability to reduce the density of a housing project or deny it if it meets the objective standards in the zoning ordinance. So basically, if it meets all of the zoning requirements, the city is really required to approve that project. You can't make it smaller, you know, as long as it meets the code. That that is the whole premise of the Housing Accountability Act. And so, you know, I I provide that context because to understand, you know, you're asking about, you know, what would be the harm of bringing back the the public hearing process, you know, certainly that that is a policy decision of the council. You certainly
Well, that is something we can do that does not necessarily interfere with state laws.
No, it doesn't. Yeah, it's state law doesn't say it must be an administrative process. I do want to point out, however, that you did adopt a housing element with a program that said, and and that this council voted on, that said that you want to have by right approvals for co-compliant housing projects and
Not approved anyway. So
Well, yeah, but we are in the process right now, and the state has found right out of compliance. I, I don't think it would, I'm just trying to responsibly communicate that, you know, if we sort of shift gears at this point, and it looks like it's something that's going backwards. I mean, we we will talk about this at a future council date, certainly, you know, that, that that's just all context, but certainly that is a policy decision of the council, you know, in in terms of whether you want to extend this or, you know, tell us to to amend the IZO.
So is there, is there a potential, is there a, is there a way to bifurcate or segregate some of the tier two projects and have a standard, there is, instead of all tier two projects, to have some sort of objective standard, at which case they would go to planning commission for a final look?
It's not something that I think council has asked us to look at, so
What I'm asking now.
Yeah, I I understand that. I'm not really prepared to kind of throw out an arbitrary limit. I think it might be helpful to understand what, what the concern would be. Like, is it size? Is it, you know, over a certain square footage? Because the the one acre must
Maybe that's what I need to know. Maybe, maybe the answer to the question is, tell me what tier two is and what goes to administrative approval now?
Yes.
Maybe that's, maybe that's the easiest way.
So tier, tier two is not like the same building throughout the city. It is height and FER, and it varies
Right.
by zone throughout the city. If I were to throw a general idea out there, like you're talking about, probably If I were to throw a general idea out there, like you're talking about probably four stories, maybe five-ish buildings.
Density bonus?
No, but, but no, no, that, that's without a density bonus. I'm just talking about our zoning. Now, remember when we talked about skate density bonus law, right? It's like the cherry on top, you cannot refuse it. Every developer has the rights to use that if they have onsite affordable units.
So let's say Pico neighborhood, what's the, uh, Pico Boulevard, let's, I don't know, and 30th, what's the height limit?
Give me a moment. If it's like neighborhood commercial.
You, you can give me somewhat of a generalization, but, but I'm trying to.
I don't want to miss speech, so just.
Oh, it's on the wall. I just heard it's on the wall.
No, I mean, I know the zone, but I think what you're asking about is the size.
I just, it was a random Pico 30th. Or Montana and 14th.
So, so let me get, so, so on Pico, because Pico has variety of zones, it's not just one zone, it has the possibility for neighborhood commercial, and then there's some larger parcels that are mixed useful to part low. So on NC, NC neighborhood, commercial, Pico, um, if you do a, there, there is no tier two, actually. Um, if you just go.
So it doesn't apply there?
No, no, it does, yeah. So it, it's a 1.5 and then 32 feet. And that's basically, if you were to, in two stories, it is, is the limit in that, in that situation. If you do affordable housing, you know, the, the zoning code was set up to provide the sort of greatest advantages for affordable housing, because it's often not limited to stories, and they have the highest height and FBR throughout the city. So that's an example of, you know, on, on Pico. Does that answer your questions?
It does. I, I, obviously, I gave you the wrong address.
So on the, um.
But maybe, maybe Sue or Glenn, I know they both want to. But maybe that'll help clarify. What I'm concerned about is pretty simple. I want to make sure that residents feel that they have a chance to weigh in, and not everything is from now on, they will have no chance to discuss the project other than one meeting prior to going to administrative approval. Because frankly, I don't know if the residents always trust or know what the administrative approval process is. So I think they're concerned that they could be hijacked and end up with something that's out of scale and may not be affordable housing. And you may have a developer who finds a way to use density bonuses, other bonuses, to try and increase the size of a project beyond what the neighborhood can bear, or at least they'll have a chance to come back and discuss it. So I think what I'm asking is the projects that absolutely we cannot touch, those continue to be administratively approved. I'd like the other ones that we do have some discretion over to be able to come to the planning. And then I know Sue and Glenn both will want to talk.
Well, let me, let me use that as a jumping off point, because actually, what's proposed here in this IZO are two kinds of projects we have virtually no discretion over. So the tier two project, regardless of where it is in the city, so long as the tier two project complies with our current zoning. We, the Housing Accountability Act, am I correct about this, Ms. Yao, says that planning commission, the city council, staff, nobody has the authority to deny permission for that to be built at the level proposed. We can nibble around the edges through the architectural review board, but we cannot constrain the height or density of the project. And that is pre-state density. If they invoke the state density bonus, they get additional height and FBR. So what you're proposing here are two types of projects over which we have virtually no discretion. And while they finish, so, so is that correct?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. I mean, that's the problem. By putting it into a discretionary process, when in fact there is no discretion, is sort of setting, setting a very bad situation.
Well, that was my next question. So, so one of the, one of the criteria for reviewing our next round of the housing element that we intend to submit to Housing and Community Development, one of the things we have to represent is that not only that we are not adding constraints on development of housing, we are actually removing constraints for housing. And in fact, public process, adding public process, particularly where there's no discretion at the end of the line, could be considered adding a constraint on pro- on housing. Because when you add public process, you add time, time is money, and you also add length in terms of time, in terms of people getting into the housing. So if we, even if we said, okay, we don't care that there's no discretion at the end of the day, but because people want the opportunity to have multiple meetings, could we not get in trouble with HCD because we would be considered to be creating a constraint on the development of housing?
Okay, affirmatively, yes, sir. Santa Monica's process was certainly been a subject of discussion and part of HCD's comments on our housing element. They really are quite laser focused on the constraints of housing. From everything from procedures to fees to, you know, permits, every step of the process for being, for going through like an excruciating detail. So, um, yeah, it's, it, it is something that, you know, we need to consider. That, that being said, as I said, this is wholly a policy decision of, of the council, and it will certainly take your direction.
So I have a couple more questions. So one is, let's put aside Housing Accountability Act and HCD and the housing element. If we are, and we may not be, but some of us may be interested in building more affordable but non-deed restricted. Isn't it also true that the more process you add, the more expensive ultimately the housing becomes? Because again, you're carrying charges, if somebody buys a piece of property, you're paying some sort of carrying charges on the property. So while the ta- while the clock is ticking, if you will, the cost of actually building that housing on a per-unit basis, or however you want to measure it, ultimately may become more expensive, meaning that the rents you charge for the building you ultimately build may in fact have to be higher to cover the cost of developing the housing instead of housing. And then my last question, because someone's going to ask this, well, couldn't we just reduce the zoning so that the Housing Accountability Act, the constraints? But we can't do that under state law, because one, we can't impose any additional zoning type constraints on the development of housing or making, we can't do any downzoning in effect for any sort of housing. Is that also correct? So we can't say, well, to live in the Housing Accountability Act, we're going to downzone, because then we'd be in violation of SB 330. Okay, great, thank you.
So, so wait, before we go off, I do have a question. You were talking about non-deed restricted affordable housing, wondering what that is and where it is.
Well, I mean, we're trying to, trying to create more affordable market rate housing. It's just like, for example, taking parking out of the equation.
So you're talking about market rate housing, that's what it's called.
Exactly. But not deed restricted affordable housing. Well, I call it still affordable housing, there's deed restricted affordable enough, but I don't think we need to.
Affordable in the eye of the beholder.
Well, I don't think we need to have that argument now. My point is that I think that if we're interested in building, since I think we're going to have to build more market rate housing, we would like to build some that is, that costs less than what we see market rate rents currently are. And one of the ways to do that is to make it cheaper to build the housing. And one of the ways to make it cheaper to build the housing is to take process out of it, because that compacts the time. And especially when at the end of the process, you have no discretion anyway, what are we really achieving other than making the housing more expensive at the back end?
My, my questions first go back to tier two. I heard Councilmember Davis say we have no discretion, but I thought I heard you say we have some discretion as the council wants to exercise it.
No, I was.
Want to go through the process?
Perspective of the IZO, right? Finding all of the, you know, information there of where we are at this point. But, you know, certainly, if you wanted to recommend that, you know, this IZO not be extended, you know, and, and we go back to regular code for certain kinds of projects, that is, that is an option that is available to you. I, I would be reticent, reticent to recommend to the council to take that course of action, given where we are in the housing element cycle and, you know, all the comments that we've heard from HCD and, you know, effects of the Housing Accountability Act on co-compliant projects. You know, I do have concern that we're, we're creating sort of frustration in the process if, if we are, you know, telling people that you have the ability for input and discretion when you really don't, you know, when the decision makers have their hands tied, and it, it, it does create a very, and, you know, I, I recognize it's a frustrating process with all of these, the laws, the density bonus laws, and you end up with buildings that, you know, are bigger than what our zoning code allows, but this is what the law allows.
And, and ultimately, I'm more concerned, I'm always concerned about what's the cost of residents, just the residents of their neighborhood with the development that they feel might be out of scale, much more than whether a developer has to pay a few more nickels to get their project accomplished. But I think my question is, then probably, hopefully, my final question, I think everyone in the council would say, um, would be, I, I, I want clarification for residents who are, if they are able to listen to this somehow, um, or read my lips. My question would be, again, tier two, as is presently configured, and affordable housing, we as a council, that cannot, none of those projects can come to us for appeal? And even if they were heard by planning, there can be no change in the final result, correct?
Right.
Okay, that's, that's what I, well, you, you looked, is there, am I wrong in that statement? Is there any wiggle room, or are we pretty much done?
I have the experience, this IZO, housing projects were. I say we had maybe one, two that were, you know, appealed, and I think that's the, it, it is a source of frustration, it was a source of frustration to the planning commission sometimes, even, you know, in terms of like, because of the Housing Accountability Act, when a project precisely meets the zoning code, you know, there, there truly is no discretion to deny it or to reduce its height density, which is, you know, probably what people are concerned about, right? But that is where, you know, the city's discretion is really hurt.
We see that in the larger Gelson's project preliminarily, with people submitting questions and trying to figure out how to alter the result. So I, I guess what I have to rely on is that you and, and your fellow staff members in planning are going to do a rigorous administrative process that protects residents whenever possible. Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear. I'll move to approve.
So, so I have a couple of questions, Ms. Yao, sorry.
I won't move to approve.
No, you can, that's fine. Do I hear a second? Let's just get it. Okay, so moved by Brock, seconded by Davis. But, so I'm just looking at 9.11.030, right? I, you know, I was just looking at before. So, um, when I look at it, this is a section of our, of our municipal code, 9.11.030. I was looking at it with somebody earlier today about what the limits are. And, um, I see that, for instance, uh, moving on to tier two, the community benefits, that the maximum height I see on here is 50 feet right now. Most of them are 36, this is 50. If you, uh, with a density bonus, how high could that go?
It's, it's honestly hard to speculate, because there's no, density bonus doesn't establish like a maximum limit in terms of what is the, what, what an applicant can ask for. It's basically, you know, there, there's two.
Quite your add-ons, I see.
Right, so whether it's concession or in kind of.
It's that one menu that I liked, Jim, back in 2013, no one else?
Yeah, there's nothing like, you know, you can only ask for two more stories or one more, like it, but it is based on, and, and the burden, the way that the law has evolved, density bonus laws has evolved over the years, has, has almost wholly shifted the burdens of the city to prove that they don't need it, if that makes sense?
Yeah, and even if our law is more, so for instance, if we get more affordable with our law, they still can pick density bonus law. So on the project, for instance, Gelson's project, they can just do tier one, but they throw a few affordable units in and then, gotcha. And, and it used to be, correct me if I'm wrong, that if your law was more restrictive than density, but in other words, if they're more expansive, if your law required more affordable units than density bonus law, then your law applied, but they aren't doing that.
No, no, it does, it does apply.
But it doesn't apply to the bonus.
Yeah, so, so the other thing is that you don't get density bonus on top of tier two.
Well, that's where I was at, because you.
You get, you get density bonus on top of tier one. That, that is our, that is the city's position. So not talking about any specific project, but, um, you know, we, we do have, um, applications that are active that are tier one projects, but they have requested density bonus and the incentives and concessions, because this, and they're, depending, again, depending on what they're asking, it's like you're either, you need, you know, whatever that height or FBR height is, you know, that, that particular incentive to basically offset the cost of the affordable housing, the inclusionary housing units you're including in your project. The other way, you know, that you could, that they can also request is like, if it physically precludes the construction of the project, is another justification they can use. So there's a couple of avenues under density bonus law to essentially, you know, ask for to pervert the zoning code. Yeah, they're, yeah.
So, so, but if we're doing tier two, if they, but they now can make a choice, they can go tier one and then use the density bonus law to get what we were, our, our sort of way of doing it, right? Where they would move into tier two, but they just go from tier one with density bonuses to tier three without having our law.
Well, let's be like, the, the two kinds of projects, tier two kinds of, of those kinds of projects, must follow the tier two maximums in our zoning code, because the offsite affordable units, density bonus law can only be used in, right, in the project. If you provide them offsite and you kind of pull together into one building, you can't use density bonus law. So then the other kind of project you're seeing is the tier one plus density bonus. And so those kind of inclusionary units, you know, whatever percentage they have on there, then they're entitled to, you know, 50%, you know, whatever it is, right? On top of, you know, the tier one FBR, and then whatever height they need to accommodate that bonus.
So, so, Emma, this is obviously, but, um, so these tier two projects would be what they are under our law with our rules of affordable housing production. And anytime they hear from that, then it's not streamlined, because it's not falling within the law, right? Um, and I think we should have a discussion about how to eliminate tier one, by the way, if, if this is going to be our position. But, um, but I do support this, and I did believe that, I do, I, I thought that was right, and I didn't understand when Councilmember Davis said that you get, uh, the density bonus on top of tier two. But as long as we have our own affordable housing program that applies to different tiers, where we have our own kind of.
Yeah, but, but density bonus law allows the local jurisdiction to have a restrictive inclusionary.
Let's start calling it a more expansive inclusionary ordinance, right? No, I mean it, I'm not joking. I mean, because really what we do is we get more affordable.
Yeah, you can think about it, that, that density bonus law essentially is, you know, it's kind of like a, a ready-made inclusionary ordinance for cities that don't have one. We've had one for 40 years, right? So.
Yes, no, I, I hear you. So I, I'm sorry, I just wanted to cast that question, but, uh, does anyone have any more discussion on this? Let's take a vote. Councilmember Davis seconded. Seconded by Davis, you got it.
Councilmember DeLa Torre.
Yes.
Councilmember Brock.
Yes.
Senator Tim McCollum.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Number four.
Yes.
Mayor Hemmerich.
Yeah, so that passes six to zero. I, I push one. Okay. Um, and I guess moving right along.
That is the one, and Social Services Commission into a newly named commission. Repealing chapters 2.56 and 2.60, and you do have one, you have two fingers on that.
Great, and now I know how to find them. And, and we have staff report. Ms. Newsome.
Good evening, council. I'm Megan Isom. This is a city clerk. I'm here to present the consolidation of the, uh, the three boards and commissions that the ad hoc agreed to consolidate back in December of 2021, which was the Commission on the Status of Women, the Commission on Senior Community, and the, um, Social Services Com- uh, Commission. I will be presenting the structural, um, the implementation of the new commission, and, um, the makeup of the commission. And Natasha Keensford is with me tonight as well, she's the Human Services Administrator, and she will be here for the discussion on the actual build admission of the newly formed. So again, staff recommends that the city council introduce for first reading an ordinance amended chapter 2.48 of the Santa Monica Municipal Code, consolidating the Commission on the Senior Committee, Commission on the State of the Social Services Commissions, into a newly named commission determined by council and repealing chapters 2.56 and 2.60. As part of that consolidation, uh, it's been recommended that the new commission have a new name. Um, out of the ad hoc commission, one of the, um, recommendation peoples commission. Staff is recommending the Human Services Commission because it more closely aligns with structural organization of the, uh, of the department. The structure would consist of nine members, but first consideration to the members of the existing three boards and commissions, that any of those members choose to apply. This commission would be a working commission, the temporary ad hoc committees to focus on certain niche areas of concern, for example, women and girls, LGBTQ plus community, older adults, and the body hot community. Um, the stack returns would be staggered following initial appointments. Initial appointments may be determined by lots, with four seats expiring June 30th of 2024, and five seats expiring on June 30th, 2026. The current, um, individual boards and commissions would cease operations effective June 30th, 2022, and the new commission would become effective July 1st, 2022. So again, staff recommends that the city council adopt this ordinance. And again, I'm here to answer any questions as, as involves to structure the commission. And Natasha can answer any questions concerning the, um, mission.
I have a big question. Do we have to name it tonight?
You do. Any ordinance, um, the name that was getting was the Human Services Commission. Um, but if that doesn't do your fancy, you're free to.
We can change it later, right? Thank you. Uh, thank you. Uh, do we have any questions? Councilmember De La Torre.
Thank you very much for your report. Uh, has there ever been, in, in the history of Santa Monica, a commission for youth, a youth commission? Yeah, um, I am aware that the city of Malibu has a youth commission, and so does the city of Los Angeles. And I think the county also has a, a youth commission. Um, I'm thinking that it, it would, it, it would be probably a good opportunity for us to maybe expand. Um, it's nine members right now, what you're recommending, to expand to 11, so add two more and designate those two spots for young people. Uh, and, and so that we can have youth representation specifically to focus on youth issues in the city's town.
As well as a community working group. And I think the end result was that, um, oh, and I don't have it right.
We discussed it here, Oskar. We had a, we had a pretty robust discussion of it about, do you remember this? I know you were here, because we discussed the attendments problems with them. Moran, you know, I mean, all of these things, and the short time, and the hours, and all that. We had a discussion about it here, and I think decided to leave it alone for the moment. Um, and, yeah, and, and do more outreach. And it's been, I, I mean, I watched some of the public safety, uh, reform oversight, and, and that it's difficult.
Challenge.
It's a challenge. I think we need to think about it. I think we need to think about, maybe it should be a separate, you know, but maybe we should have a youth adjunct on every commission and see how it goes. But even when you get a good one, then it only lasts a year and that's, you know what I mean? So, but we have discussed this at some length, including in connection, I think, with this.
Yeah, no, I understand. I was thinking it might be an opportunity right now to bring that discussion back and, and take some action on it that allows, you know, young people some representation. Because I can't, other than that, it would be to create a whole youth commission, which I would actually be more favor, I would favor that more.
I would too. So let's talk about that, and because this has not been working.
Yeah, I mean, because it doesn't create a safe space. Young people, when you throw them in with the majority adults.
But it's not justified.
I know, so, okay.
Okay.
I hear you.
Thanks for your question.
I'll bring it back.
Okay, so, uh, that would be a thirteen.
So the Human Services Commission is sort of like the leading, uh, title for the, for this commission. And then, yeah. I think Sue has another recommendation.
No, I don't.
No, anyone else?
I think we should run with this, and then we should have a contest.
That might be a good idea. Let the commissioners, once they get in, bring, uh, some recommendations for a, a different name if they want it, a different name.
But you understand, I, I mean, right, I didn't expect to be naming it tonight, so it just works.
Human commission, yeah.
Any other questions? Dinga, any other discussion? Oh, right, we do have two, oh, and I'm so sorry. So, uh, Jerry Rubin, are you still, oh, there you are. And, and then Teresa Marosco, you will be the next speaker. So if you want to walk behind Jerry, you haven't had much of that lineup on the law problem.
There. Okay. Well, thank you very much, uh, Mayor Hemmerich, uh, council members, city manager, city staff, fellow Santa Monicans, great to be back here at City Hall after a few years. Really thrilling in many ways, and it gives a lot of hope. And basically, I want to thank everybody for the hard work that gave them. Keep our city moving forward. As far as the suggestion, I'm pretty sure if there wasn't staff and financial concerns, you wouldn't be doing this, because things obvious. Those commissions are needed to stand alone, and they've been doing exemplary work for years and decades. Needed that separate designation. So hopefully at some point, that'll be able to be done, which for now, I understand it. Do the best we can under the circumstances. I agree with, uh, Councilmember De La Torre's recommendation and Mayor Hemmerich. We could use a youth commission. In fact, uh, Councilmember De La Torre, I think you'll remember that meeting we had at the Ken Edwards Center many, many years ago to try to propose that. And went up to Malibu and saw the work they're doing in their youth commission. So it's something to think about. And, uh, I really appreciate the work all the boards and commissions do. And the Urban Forest Task Force, the Disabilities Commission, and all the work that it does. So, uh, they're actually free consultants for the city. They deserve to be fully supported. So again, thank you very much for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Can I turn that thing on?
I asked him to short.
I guess.
Uh, can you, can you turn the mic?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Here you go. I didn't realize it wasn't on before. Yeah, got you. Sorry. There you go. Go ahead, Ms. Marosco.
Thank you. Good evening again. Um, again, I'm coming to speak to you on, um, seven, item 7B, um, as a member of the community and not as the vice chair of the housing. Um, I have a concern with the consolidation of the Social Services Commission, because doesn't this mean that the charge that required the commission to evaluate and create a report on the successes and failures of taxpayer grantees goes away? Essentially not, um, there's no accountability as to, um, the funding. Who then becomes responsible for providing accountability for the tens of millions of grant funds? Who decides what's working and what's not? Is this just another paragraph by the city?
Thank you, Ms. Marosco. Um, I should note that the Audit Committee at this moment is doing a, um, a deep dive on our Human Services Grants Program to look at the data. Um, and I, since I've been on the council, there has not been such a report out of the social service. So, um, Councilmember Brock.
I have one comment. I click on this. Um, right now, this, this, uh, new body is scheduled for quarterly. And it is three commissions amalgamating into one. Um, I would suggest for the remainder of the year, even with staff shortages, that we go bimonthly, uh, for the rest of the year rather than quarterly.
Well, wait, hold on. Let's hear from, uh, yeah, because.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Thanks for coming. I'm the Human Services Administrator. Um, our thinking with the quarterly meetings was not to restrict the body, but to, um, that, that just as a, as a minimum, with the ability to meet more frequently as needed for special meetings. Um, what we have found in working with all of our commu- uh, commissions and human services is a lot of the work is happening at the ad hoc levels. Um, where, and then those ad hocs come back to the larger body, make recommendations based on what the work that they've been doing as ad hocs. And then the body makes the decision and brings that to, um, city council. Um, sometimes having a monthly meeting, they, they have found often throughout our commissions that there's a not, that there's, excuse me, not a lot that those ad hocs are reporting out on monthly. But after a couple of months or a few months of work, there's more that they reflect that. And, yeah, but you'll find a lot in many of the commission meetings, uh, that the minutes reflect that. Not a lot of, uh, monthly anyway output from the, um, ad hoc.
If I can follow up, I'm not suggesting monthly, but you're having a new commission formed with new members, where part of their work will begin to know each other and be able to work together and decide on their common objectives. And they won't be able to do that if they meet every three months. So yes, while I think they should be meeting monthly, I'm suggesting bimonthly for the remainder of this year, uh, which does only gives you probably one or two more meetings. But I think in, in taking a new commission and putting it together with a large number of members. Uh, what I've heard from some other commissions is the quarterly meetings. Uh, I just heard this from the Chair of the Arts Commission last week, that he no longer, they don't really have that cohesiveness, and they're unable to come up with new initiatives more quickly because by the time they think of the initiatives, and it takes three months to get them going, and three more months. So I would ask that we switch that to every bimonthly for the remainder of 2022, and then look at for 2023 as occasion warrants.
He, he means every other month, not twice a month.
I meant, oh, I'm sorry. I meant bimonthly.
Uh, yeah, I never know whether it's, yeah.
Bimonthly is every other month. I wasn't asking for bi-weekly. Or monthly. I, I'm trying to get.
No, no, I hear you. But, uh, but so, um, may I ask a follow up on that? And that is, so, you know, look, I've seen commissions work super well with the ad hocs and coming back and reports out, where they actually do deep dives into the things that they're interested in. But I think people need training in order to understand how to do this. And what I wonder is, are we contemplating if this is a heavily ad hoc committee, which I think is great, are we going to do some training to help bring them along?
I have staff who can support them in the ordinance. The committee, or excuse me, this commission is to, um, begin July 1st. The current commissions will sunset on June 3rd. And so there's nothing in the ordinance. They could certainly meet, um, monthly. They can meet bimonthly as they're, I think that's a great, um, uh, concern or, or issue that, um, Councilmember Brock brought up. They're new, they're going to be sort of, you know, getting their, their.
Right.
Um, they can meet more. So the, the, this ordinance is to move on beyond, you know, their first year. Yes, so they by all means have the ability to meet more frequently. Certainly in the beginning, as you point out, will probably very likely be necessary.
And we speak of people, they are planning to schedule as part of what we, you know, what we came back to the ad hoc, to have the chair and vice chair training in July, as well as we'll have the onboarding for the quarters. So we anticipate after you guys do annual appointments in June, that we will definitely need to have an onboarding, because we'll probably make some appointments.
Um, and, and, you know, we may want to have a meeting for all boards and all commissioners about how to write a report, how to do this. I think we ought to think about that. I would be willing actually to work on that with you and, and to help people with that, having done this a few times myself, so, uh, including in my own little ad hoc. But I think it's important people know how to do it, and I think we need to train them to do it. And I'm willing to help you do that. Okay?
That's a good idea. Yeah, and the ordinance does, the, which I believe came out of the ad hoc committee of preference. When you're appointing new members, you look at, uh, current commissioners, commissioners from the Social Services Commission, the COSW, and the Commission on the Senior Committee. So that, um, commission, excuse me, so that you have that experience going forward into the new commission.
So, uh, I, I'm embarrassed to say, yeah, so it's moved, right?
I just moved.
Okay, moved by McCowen.
I'll second, I'll second.
Seconded by Brock.
And then I want to make the bid.
Direction.
Yeah, or direction.
Really quick, I, you know, and, and moving that we consolidate the Commission on the Senior Community and Social Services Commission and doing newly named commission. How is it, the, um, uh, the Human Services Commission, thank you. Uh, and repeal chapters 2.5. And then seconded by Brock.
Okay, so moved on to McCowen, seconded by Brock. This is, um.
And my direction would be that for the remainder of 2022, after the commission is formed in July, that they meet bimonthly. Thank you.
Any other direction? Any other discussion? I, I think I made that pretty clear. So, um, yeah, let's, uh, have a roll call vote. Yeah. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, so that passes six to zero.
Next item is intercession, recommending Santa Monica, objection 7.04.05 of adjusting the city's campaign contribution limits. And we.
No, let's not do that. No.
And we have no speakers.
Oh, that's me again. So, um, staff is recommending that council adopt an ordinance adjusting the city's Election Code section on limitations of contribution from individuals. The code, uh, requires an adjustment to the city's contribution limit from individuals every five years to reflect inflation. The last time this was done was in January 2016. It should have been done last year, but that didn't happen. So, um, it will occur this year, and then the next time we will do it in 2026. So the prior rate was $340. So the prior rate was $340. The new rate would be $410. This would only apply to city council and rate control candidates. And the new limit would take effect at this election in November 2023.
Any questions, Councilmember Daly?
Does the city council have the authority to set limits for the school board or for the college board content? No. Because it's unlimited when you run for a school board or city or college board. Someone can write a $100,000 check to one candidate. But here's 410. That's what it's going to be now. Okay.
Maximum that you could, or I think your demo graph for your assembly, something like that. It's the same as a state limit.
Which, right.
It's like 2600. I mean, it's, what? 4900?
Hundred per donor. Can we do that? We can't do that for the PACs for the political action committee.
Well, so, no, I just have a quick question. So if, this is, can you get 4900 for the primary and then again for the general? In those, yeah, that's what I just wonder if it's, anyway, I just thought you might know that offhand. Okay, so. No, no, I was. Oh, I was.
And can we go higher than the 410, or is that?
No, it's set by DPIW, which is the, that's for Irving Waite, Irving Waite.
We have to amend the charter and go to the voter.
We already have to prove that.
Oh. So as a council, who decided by the council years ago. And then the increase came about in 2016 or 2011.
But there was a, there was a time in our history where the amount was much lower and it was tripled or something, right?
It started out at 200, it lasted 250 for a lot of years.
Yes.
For a lot of years. And then in 2011, the council at that time moved it. And for some reason, I don't know why I remember this, but anyway. It went to 325, and then the five-year increment in 2016 was $15 or whatever. So it went to a small amount.
But we would change it.
And in this time, I guess because of inflation.
But, well, yeah, I mean, you're going to count today's.
It's a whopping 410, but as a council, you can tell. You have to bring it back as an ordinance.
But could we, but I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, could we increase it for this election? I think there's some provision about this, that it only becomes effective in the next bunch. To increase it to 1,000. I mean, just by way of speaking, would it be effective, and then that would become effective 60 days later, right? Or 45 days later? Would it be effective for this election?
I would think it would.
I'm asking because I thought I saw something, I was doing some research on that issue, but something like it. And I thought I saw a reference somewhere to the fact that it doesn't be effective. But I could be wrong, but I thought I saw it. That wasn't what I was.
To avoid any council members seeking reelection, having some interest.
Yes, being able to jack up their, their own contributions. And, but I'm just saying, I, I'm not, because that wasn't the issue I was looking. But I saw something about it, so that's why I asked that question. But in the meantime, let's vote on the 410. Yeah, let's have a motion. So moved.
Can we raise it to 500?
We have to change the ordinance. Well, we can either that on the fly.
At this point, it's only 410. But if we want to bring back the ordinance.
Yeah, you could bring it back, but that's not for today.
All right, I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
So move by Davis, seconded by David for anyone.
Well, I do want to say, because we had a lot of discussion about this over the years. And I think that, you know, if we do want to bring it back, people need to be cognizant of the fact that one of the big issues for reelection is money. And the idea is, while we don't want to disadvantage people from their ability to raise money, we're starting to raise the money higher and higher and higher. And all of a sudden, because it's very hard right now for people, most people can't afford to give $340 to a council candidate. So you raise it to, what are we talking, you know, 410, and a greater number of people now can't make that. You raise it to 500 or 750. So I think, you know, it's easy to say, well, sure, let's just raise it. But you need to be cognizant of one of the optics, quite honestly. Like you're looking like you're trying to jack up your own contributions. And two, I think the idea is that if we want people to have to go out into the community and we have more people be able to participate and given a level that doesn't feel like, oh, the rich people get to have undue labor costs because they pay more. So, I mean, I just think we're, you want to bring it back, but I think you should give some.
I would just mention that I think the majority of donors still would be small, whether $25 or $50 or $10 or 100. My, I think our overall goal, this won't be now. This probably won't be while I'm on the council, but would be to end up with city financing for our elections at least at a 50% level. So I think that, to me at least, would be the goal.
Let me just say that their city, Seattle, for instance, has gone an interesting way solving this problem. I've often thought it should be, but not, not the top of our list at this moment. So, but in the meantime, we have a motion and a second, and we can talk about this another time.
Motion second. I just want to say one, the people with a lot of money, they put their money in the political action committee. They have no limits. I want to make that.
Or into ballot initiatives.
Yeah, correct.
Let's have a vote, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, so that passes six to zero. Pardon me? Oh, so, I'm sorry, yes, we can, we are doing, six to zero. Wait, no, we do. We do, because I see it. Two speakers. I couldn't say that.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Nice to see you.
Hi, Steve. Rich, another little counsel. Pleasure to be here, seeing that we're.
You need Nikki? Nikki, come back.
Seeing that we're quickly approaching our curfew. I'll keep my remarks very short this evening. This evening, staff is going to present our recommendations to update the Big Blue Bus's fare policy. The last time we presented a fair policy that you adopted, it was in 2017. The recommendations this evening includes studying our fearless fare pilot program that has been underway since last July, which we feel was tremendously successful. Currently, 94% of our customers are using fearless or contactless fare media to pay their fare. The final recommended fare proposal has three distinct elements. These three elements are designed to make us riding safer, more attractive, and easier to use. And the elements work together to produce a better customer outcome. The first element includes changes to the B2B fare products. It includes resuming accepting cash onboard our buses. The second element is reducing the types of fare media that we accept onboard our buses. And the third is increasing convenient access to contactless fares, especially for unbanked customers and those without smartphones. Lastly, I'd like to thank our staff, especially our MCOs, our CSA team, and our customers for their patience toward bringing the fare pilot. I also want to thank you for your support. It got off to a kind of a rough start, but we feel it was successful. And lastly, I wanted to thank Tim McCormick and Alfredo, who are here this evening. Other than the staff that really led the charge on this for us. And so now I'll turn it over to Tim, and he will present our recommendations. Thanks.
So let me just tell you that twice this week, people have told me that Big Blue Buses are better than others. So, good job. We like blue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and city staff. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Tim McCormick. I am the manager of planning and performance at Big Blue Bus Department of Transportation. Let's see, how do I advance? Oh, we got it. There it is, got it. So I'm here tonight to seek your approval for changes to the fare policy for Big Blue Bus. I'm also going to share some information with you about our contactless fare pilot and how that pilot informed our current recommendations. Of note, in the new recommended policy, as Ed mentioned, were inclusion of free transfers for contactless patrons and the restoration of acceptance of cash onboard. So just to recap, what's happened, at the beginning of 2020, B2B customers were using cash paper passes, tap, and mobile ticketing. And then on March 20th, 2020, they suspended all fare collection and use of the front door for nearly a year. This was done to prevent drivers and passengers from COVID-19 transmission, from touching the fare box, or being close proximity to each other. And with the installation of protective barriers, fare collection was resumed in February of 2021. And then in July of 2021, B2B launched a contactless fare pilot to exploit the cost and benefits of an exclusively contactless fare system, where passengers would pay their fare without touching the fare box or touching cash. Cash and paper passes would not be accepted onboard Big Blue Bus. So the recommendations in the fare policy were informed by what we learned during the pilot. The changes that have happened during the pandemic, and that includes both of the way people travel and also the way the world has changed, the technologies available. The new fare policy seeks to lower fares to help attract riders. We're currently at 80%, 81% of pre-pandemic service levels, but less than half of the riders have returned. So we do need to work to attract riders. We want to align our fare products with what customers want, maintain the safety improvements that we've achieved during the pandemic, and retain the travel speed improvements that have been achieved as a result of the contactless fare adoption. A public hearing on this fare proposal was held in February of 2022, and a concurrent public survey had over 700 respondents. So what you see here is not what we are recommending, but instead what was presented to the public for public. It included free B2B transfers, reducing some fares, no longer accepting cash or paper passes onboard, discontinuing some products, changing other products, accepting Metro day passes, and raising the maximum age that children can ride free from four to five years old. So as I mentioned before, we had a lot of public comment. 700 people answered the survey. Within that, we had the ability to hand type a message. We had an excess of, I want to say, just over 3,000 hand type messages. They're in your attachments, and they were, it was a lot. And it resulted in a lot of significant changes to the proposal afterwards, because we really wanted to be responsive to the public and meet them where they were. So as a result of the feedback and data collected on our tap access locations, not all the changes are recommended that were shown to the public. So taking it one at a time, staff does recommend implementing a free B2B transfer for contactless fare users. And this touches a large number of our customers, and it also aligns our fare policies with Metro, because that's what Metro is doing now. Staff, just to be clear, does not recommend continuing the practice of not accepting cash onboard. In other words, we recommend resuming cash collection onboard. While we still would like to see as many contactless users onboard as possible, for our unbanked customers in certain locations, obtaining contactless fares is still inconvenient. But we have audited all the tap sales locations and learned exactly how many people are still using only cash. And that's about 33% of our riders do not have a debit or a credit card. And we measured the gaps in the walking distance between where you could obtain. It's just not tight enough to demand that people switch. So due to our recommendation that we resume cash collection, of course, it's going to result in the cost of cash collection continuing. And staff, as a result, is not recommending that all of the proposed fare reductions be implemented for financial reasons. But this includes not recommending reducing the single fare ride. The single ride, there, excuse me. In terms of the rest of the changes, staff recommends that we eliminate paper passes to lower the cost of fare collection and replace the contactless 13-ride pass with a 10-ride pass. The recommended 10-ride pass costs less per ride and simplifies making cost comparisons. Staff does not recommend eliminating the one-day pass, the seven-day pass, or the annual pass. The relative utilization of these passes is low, but the people who do use them are passionate about the use of the passes. They feel that they should be able to retain them. And honestly, if we're not printing them on paper and they're only going on contactless, it's not much of a burden for us. Printing them on paper, distributing them is a much bigger burden. So retaining them on contactless fare media really is not much of an issue. Staff also does not recommend lowering the price of the 30-day regular and senior disabled 30-day passes. Those reductions are really not financially feasible with the recommended assumption of cash collection. Staff does recommend reducing the price of the 30-day youth pass, $19. It's been at this price for several years. It was put out as a promotion. Both LE Unified and Santa Monica, Malibu Unified are offering free transit rides on GoPass. So most kids have transferred off this pass onto that pass. However, with some schools not joining GoPass, this youth pass is still the pass of choice for parents of children going to schools that are not in the GoPass system. Staff also recommends accepting Metro one-day passes. This solves a recurring issue found when tourists purchase passes at E-line stations in Santa Monica. They'd walk out of the station, get on a bus, and say, I'll give you something to pass in that train station right there. I can't use it on this bus, but it says it's good on buses. So we talked to Metro, and we just want to accept their pass. It's unlikely that anyone's going to buy it and accept it for us, but it will solve that problem once and for all. Eventually, Metro is going to transition the one-day Metro pass to a one-day regional, and that will solve itself with this Metro measure. And lastly, on this page, staff recommends raising the age of the children ride free from four to five years old, in alignment with the recent pains at Metro. This is going to close the age gap, age gap between riding free as a toddler and riding free on GoPass. Right now, there's a little period in kindergarten, depending on when these credits go, where you have to pay for a short time. This closes that gap. So that's everything. And now here it is, all on one table. So the things that we are recommending approval of, just to recap, is the free transfer, no longer accepting paper passes, replacing the 13-ride pass with a 10-ride pass, reducing the price of the 30-day youth pass to $19, accepting Metro one-day regular and senior disabled, and free rides for children five and under instead of four and under. The ones that we are not recommending are reducing the contactless regular fare from $110 to $1. We are, this is a double negative. We're not, we're not recommending no longer accepting cash. We are recommending accepting cash. We are not recommending discontinuing the one-day, seven-day, and annual. We're not recommending reducing the price of 30-day regular and SDM passes. And that is everything, I think. Okay? And to put that into a fare table that the consumers would look at, this is the same information, just presented in another way. One thing I want to point out, in the new limited office hours work week, many riders are now favoring single rides and multi-ride passes instead of monthly passes. And the recommended policy offers a 10-ride pass with free transfer that we think will become a dominant fare product based on our understanding of customer wants. That pass is going to be offered at $9.450 for your disabled, so that's 90 cents a ride for a 10-ride ticket. Additionally, the discounts offered by using contactless fares, combined with our continued efforts to expand contactless fare access, are expected to result in a continued migration. efforts to expand contactless fare access are expected to result in a continued migration away from cash usage. And as I've mentioned, every rider that we can lure away from cash will help make the system more efficient and faster for everybody. Almost at the end. There are a few additional changes that are intended to expand access to contactless fares, especially and most pointedly for unbanked customers. Those include paying commissions on pass sales at retailers to encourage more stores to carry passes. Right now, stores do not get anything if they carry our passes. Metro's tap office has made a clear list. Certain stores in the area have rejected selling our products on that basis. So we would match Metro's 3.75% commission when they sell our passes to the public. We also intend to explore new technologies such as QR codes and open payment systems so that can help us expand access to contactless payment. And lastly, we intend to create a program to identify and address the transit fare needs of vulnerable populations. We did interview some social service providers and we realized there's a lot we don't know about what's going on out there. And so we want to actually create a program to dive more deeply into how to get contactless fares into people's hands. Because that is the only way they can get access to all the regional discounts, senior discounts, low-income discounts, like that. So this just, this table right here just puts everything on one page. All the ways that we're going to seek increased access to contactless fares because it is a key takeaway from the pilot, but that's what we need to do. These efforts are intended to expand access to contactless fares and continue to attract people away from that sort of pilot. So in terms of the pilot that we ran since last July, just a few facts to understand what actually happened. We did have 94% of customers adopt contactless fares over time. The pilot introduced many of our cash customers to the tap system that had been traditional cash users. And for example, during the pilot, participation has gone up sixfold in the county-sponsored low-income reuse fare program known as LIFE. The contactless fare pilot has allowed us to increase scheduled bus speeds without sacrificing on time performance, and it has saved about 9,000 hours a year so far in travel time. And lastly, the pilot clarified for us what gaps we still need to close before the benefits of contactless fares are conveniently available to all riders. In terms of projected impacts, the reduction in fare costs for riders is expected to increase passenger activity by about 150,000 customers annually, mostly from the free transfers and lower fares. And this proposal also will be expected to reduce fare revenue by $431,000 in fiscal year 22, 23. And those reduced fare revenues will be offset by a one-time federal funding received from the Coronavirus Response and Relief Substantial Incorporations Act. And beyond FY 22, 23, the operating subsidies provided by Metro are expected to increase as the funding allocation is partially reliant on hardship. And lastly, we are always required to do a Title VI analysis, principal rights impacts on every fare proposal. This proposed fare policy was found to cause no negative disparate impact on minority populations or negative disproportionate burden on low-income people. The timeline for these changes, should council move forward with approving the fare policy as recommended, would be to implement the policy in full on June 22, 2022. Metro's tap office requires significantly time to implement changes, and so this time is needed for lineup fare collection partners and prepared communications to the public. And the last slide, staff recommends that the city council approve the proposed changes to the fare policy for Big Blue Bus Department of Transportation.
So thank you for that report, and I want to compliment you, one, for the fact that your pilot did what pilots are supposed to do, which is actually gave us results that let us make choices, and I really appreciate that. On the other hand, your recommended action doesn't give us any options. So I just want to say, I always think we should, right? So, you know, so I do believe that. And, you know, but finally, on the cash thing, I mean, remember how much time we spent on the not taking cash, taking cash, right? And I think what this shows is we need to sample before we take the dive, right? So thank you all very much. Councilmember Brock.
I also want to commend our transportation staff on the decision to remove, to continue to take cash, to bring that back. And I have a question really quickly from Mr. King. I have some old tokens laying around. Can I still use those? And I think I found a half a student bus pass with like three or four punches. Can I bring those in? Beautiful. Thank you very much. That's probably true. Thank you.
So, so I typically ride the three and the three are those that ride the most. And one of the things I did notice, it was faster when we had cash options. And I know we're trying to drive people to the contactless, more availability. In the interim, as we do that, is there any way to make it faster to board with cash? Because I'll tell you, and I can tell you exactly where it starts. It starts at the Venice Line and it goes all the way down to about the end of Marina Del Rey, and then most people are back on contactless media. But, and then I might have a second question about people getting on at the airport. But, but, I mean, is there, is there something we can do to make cash boarding faster? Because it really is much slower. I don't know. I don't know the answer. It just, I'm telling you because you have people standing there fumbling with, you know, getting the cash out of the dollar bills in a rut and I got to straighten it out to get it into the machine. And then, oh, wait a minute, I got change. I got to get change with anyone. I mean, I can't tell you how many quarters I've given away on the bus. Right, right.
We get them after you give them.
Yes.
No. The machine works as well as it's going to work. Money is dirty and problematic to collect. The machines, you know, don't work well for very long before they need repair and cleaning. What we can do is work with our social service partners to get contactless fares into the hands of more people who need them. Right now, we have a one-ride ticket that fires and it's not working for a lot of our social service agencies. So we're exploring QR code technology and a non-expiring ticket. We were forced to work with tap, and now we're going beyond tap to look at other technologies. We basically need to get the advantages of cashless into the hands of people through attraction and through availability. And to the extent that you're still seeing people with cash, we haven't achieved that yet. But that is, the answer to your question is we have to do a better job getting them what they need.
So I need to start getting quarters again, is what you're trying to. The second question I have is, so I get off at the aviation station. I see both interactions with LAX. And, and obviously, we have people who are coming from the airport and they're trying to take Big Blue Bus. And it's exactly the issue you talked about in Santa Monica, which is they go to the machines, but they don't understand that they're buying a one-day pass and they think that's going to work, and then it doesn't work on Big Blue Bus. So I applaud that. But I'm wondering, is there some signage or something? We either need to work with Metro or on our bus or something so that people understand that? So while the bus is sitting, you know, this is what you need to get. Again, because otherwise, especially when you have people from other countries and they don't understand our money, you know? The only thing I've done is, yes, that's a $1 bill and that's a quarter and this is what you need to ride the bus. So is there something we can do better to get some of our visitors coming from the airport to understand that there is something they can buy that they don't have to, you know, like the, you know, so they don't have to use cash?
So the only thing you can buy today in that machine is store value on a ticket. And we have implored tap to change the messaging on the machine to say to people, please do that instead of buying a one-day pass, given that, you know, many people are wearing Big Blue Bus. What we did do at the Big Blue Bus stop is put a new thing, which is an Apple Pay QR code. So if they have an iPhone, they can simply pull the QR code in, it automatically brings them to a bus ticket purchase. We did do that. We have asked tap change the messaging on all of the Santa Monica stations to stop advising people to buy one-day passes and start advising them to buy store value. People get up there and they see the pricing and they go, well, I think it's a better deal for me to get the one-day pass. And they come away with what they're about to do.
Well, and not just the Santa Monica stations, but the airport stations.
Right.
Because they think, I'm going to take the bus to Santa Monica, and I've heard Santa Monica is this incredibly walkable city, so I don't need it. Then I have a final question, and it's a little silly, but this actually happened to me with TFL, Transport for London, which I have an Oyster card, and it expired, and I went to reload it, and now they won't let you reload it. We actually have a lot of international visitors in Santa Monica. We don't have that same issue. We let people reload their cards, don't we, internationally? Because now, now TFL is on my naughty list for Christmas releases. Because it's been, I went to, I'm going to London and I went to reload it. It's like, oh, I'm sorry, we don't do international transactions. Well, think about it. Look at it. I guess it must be, but no, it was very, it was very strange. So anyway, if you could take a look at that, because we do have a lot of international visitors who might want to buy contactless fares before they come. And if we don't allow them to do that, then they're back at the metro station buying these passes. Thank you. Now we're on questions. Do you have questions?
I just wanted to comment that I really appreciated reading all the feedback from riders. And it's just great, you know, when public organizations are getting feedback from the people that are mostly impacted by policy decisions. So it was really good to see all that feedback and all the recommendations are informed by that. So thank you for that.
Because we have speakers. Hang on, you. Okay, so now we're going to move, seeing no more questions. Let's move to, yes, Jerry Ruben, Rafael Cardenas and Jonathan Foster. So you can line up, for those of you who haven't been here, he's right in the back, I see. Jonathan Foster. See him? Go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Ruben.
As a longtime rider of the Blue Bus, in fact, never had a car in my life, I've never had a driver's license. Were deeply indebted to Big Blue Bus. And yes, they have the best drivers. Yes, they have great buses. And yes, it's easy to take. And yes, I'm still offering to pay the first favor of anyone that hasn't ridden the bus. And with Earth Day coming up, I urge everyone to go green and ride blue. At least try, which isn't hard to do, to weave your car home at least 10%, 15% of the time, if not more, consider taking the bus. I want to thank the Big Blue Bus in particular for everything they did during these hard past two years. Resurfaced for a year, adjusting the buses to make them safe. The policy, make sure, and everyone complied, to wear masks. I still wish that we continue a little bit longer now. Hope that continues longer. And I had originally thought that the, and I still think that cashless fare is the way to go. And I hope that more people that don't think that now will come onboard and start realizing that's going to benefit everyone, including the people that think it might not. It really holds up the service when you're trying to stuff a dollar bill in a machine and the driver has to be distracted to try to get you to do it, and the line is getting longer and longer. So I support the Blue Bus. I thank you. I urge you to approve this and give the Blue Bus whatever they need.
Thank you, Mr. Ruben. And Mr. Cardenas.
So you mean city council members? My name is Rafael Cardenas and I'm a student enrolled at the University of Southern California. I strongly support the free Big Blue Bus to Big Blue Bus transfers proposal, and I strongly support the new lower fare proposal. And I recommend to the council that cash should be accepted. To start off, consumers who use contactless form will now enjoy the benefits of free BBB to BBB transfers within two hours and is an honest incentive, and I am exhilarated by this change. The Title VI Fair Equity Analysis Report in December 2021 provided data that approximately 62.3% out of 592 people transfer from BBB to BBB on their one-way trips. This incentive of contactless fare use will benefit many people and save them hundreds of dollars annually. But this only goes towards those who are aware of this benefit. It is crucial that this information is put on big advertisements at the bus stop, seat shelters, so people are aware of the benefits of contactless fare. For those who choose to not use contactless fare, they will be missing out on the BBB to BBB transfers, and at the end of the day, it is people's choice for using cash and we need to be considerate of these people. Survey responses from the staff report have shown negative feedback on BBB's refusal to accept cash. To this day, there are still people who face challenges in using contactless fares due to having less accessible tap vendor locations, not having smartphones or computers, or simply because of their elderly status. Please, please, please. In regards to equity and inclusion, I strongly suggest keeping cash as a form of payment of the Big Blue Bus while still keeping initiative push for contactless fare. Thank you for this opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you for speaking to us tonight. We appreciate your being here. Mr. Foster. Welcome back to City Pod.
My heart's pounding, Mike, always when I get up here. I think you should stick with the cash. I had to go to the Culver City Bus. I got the Big Blue Bus and couldn't ride your bus because I didn't want to, and I thought that sucked. I think it's un-American. The Constitution says that gold and silver coin is money. Also, silver had a moderate level of antibacterial, killing bacteria, still the real silver did. I think though, like this guy's a student, if your hurry-up is going, you got to keep going, but oops, you left your card, now you still can't get on the bus. If you made a mistake, oh, I left the card, but I really need to get, but the driver won't let me on because cash, which is, what we live on is cash, you can't use it here? That doesn't sound like Santa Monica to me. Hurry-up is running into the cash issue. Well, it takes time. That's what it's going to do. You have to accept that. That's what, that's what it is. That's life. Yeah, but if they do it at the airport, they still have to put it into something, right? You have to accept that. I only got one minute.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. We signed up for one, I did. Oh, he was late. Is that, yeah, whatever. So any discussion of, so does anyone want to move the single staff recommendation? I move the staff ups?
All right.
Moved by Davis, seconded by Brock. How about that? Okay. Since I haven't seen you on a bus lately.
Or you.
I have been on a bus lately. Yeah.
We're going to have Jerry Ruben by a second.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, so that passes six to zero. And we will be continuing the appointments. Do we need to move that, Denise? So do you see? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. 13 to. Oh. Oh, Mr. Foster.
I listened to several, well, first of all, if he wants to resign, sure. What are we listening? No, you can't. But I listened to some of the stuff that they talked about with this public safety of reforming oversight condition. I was not impressed. Many of the things that are creating the problems that we are dealing with, these people can't take care of this. It's like we're running in a circle, trying to chase something. You know how when you drop it, just a piece of paper, but it's faster than you do? It's going so fast, like that. We can't even keep up. You, you, we can't even keep up with it because, because this oversight, even the stuff that they talked about might have been close, didn't really help. And when I tried to call and, and I couldn't call, and so I sent an email, they returned an email and they said that, you know, basically, it's good to hear from you, we're, we're moving on. I, I didn't get a, I feel like I got an invitation to keep, you know, getting engaged. So I stopped. And I, I don't, I don't see that the recommendations really are, you know, encompassing as much public safety. It's, it's taken a while, right? And when this was put in place, there were a lot of bigger problems. So maybe it's done some good, right? But the people are still homeless. The one that I have said so much about is homeless women in wheelchairs. And how dare anybody with a billion or more leave women outside homeless in wheelchairs in this United States of America? Boy, do I want to grind somebody's head down. If, but, but, you know, I would get in trouble, so I'd just go play the drumshead. I come here and I speak about it to people who are more powerful than I am. You guys obviously are council members. I'm just the drummer. Can, can somebody have it? Who, who would leave a woman outside right now with a billion dollars? Well, I mean, just.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. We now have an opening on the commission that you comply for. So move, do I hear? So move to accept Mr. Ramirez's resignation with regret and authorize the city court to publish the vacancy move by De La Torre, seconded by Brock. And we can do it by voice? Oh. So can I hear approval by acclamation? Aye.
Aye.
Everybody approves? Any names? No names?
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, for your service.
Yes, and thank you very much for your service, Mr. Ramirez. And I think we are on to public input. And we have two speak, oh, wait, sorry. Five speakers. So the speakers are, first Jerry Ruben, next Teresa Morosco, who's waving to me that she's not speaking, then Anne Bonawala, Erica Willhite, and I assume this is Jonathan Foster, although I don't have a last name. Is there another Jonathan here? Oh, it is you? Okay, great. Okay, so Mr. Ruben.
And thank you all so much for being back here again. I want to first reiterate the happy Easter, happy Passover wishes that our city manager spoke to earlier. I also want to wish everyone a happy Earth Day. It started in 1970. More important than ever that we really think about it, think about climate change and think about all the things that Santa Monica believes in. And I want to invite you all to a small little gathering we do every year. We're doing it on Earth Day, Friday, April 22, 6:00 PM until 7:00 PM at the Children's Tree of Life, which is one of the first heritage trees in Santa Monica. And we're having our annual tree hugging day. I know some of you have come to the past gatherings we've had before. I urge you to try to make it if you can, but if you can't make it, hug a tree in your yard or on the sidewalk or wherever you may be. You don't have to wait until Earth Day to do it. Let's bring tree hugging back by Pampa with the band. And you can go to our Facebook page for more details. The name of our Facebook page is Tree Hugging Friends. My wife, Marissa, and I saw it that day, few years ago. I just want to thank you all. It's so great just to look and see all of you here. I can't even tell you. I'm going to welcome now, hug Marissa and be thankful that we all live together in this great city of Santa Monica. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us tonight, Mr. Ruben. Ms. Bonawala.
Okay. By now you've received a time-sensitive notice of misconduct by city staff and I'm here to amplify that notice. For months, staff in several offices have been making unilateral decisions that enable professional misconduct by a housing commissioner and appear to intentionally impede good work. These fanatics happen to coincide with your new housing commission appointments. Folks who are deeply committed to transparency and fixing problems, the housing authority that I and other community members have been pointing out for years. City staff are making individual and small group decisions resulting in the following: overlooking the former chair's misconduct against other commissioners, the unexplained refusal of staff to operate Blue Jeans at the last commission meeting, the sudden and unexplained claim two and a half weeks after the fact that the former chair's handwritten and signed resignation as chair somehow means that something else, that he didn't resign and that somehow he still chair despite the commission's uncontested March meeting announcement of the chair's resignation and of an upcoming new chair vote at the next meeting. Mr. Kemper's unexplained absence from the March commission meeting and city staffs claimed just yesterday that the housing commission meetings would suddenly become quarterly, not monthly, and would effectively cancel the commission's planned actions, including scheduled state and, and federal fair housing speakers. Mayor Hemelrich, out of formal investigation, the April 26 agenda or an item 13, because the public will not stand for apparently intentional collusion to undermine the earnest efforts of your newest appointees. Fix this and hold the city staff accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bonawala. Ms. Willhite.
Good evening, esteemed council members and Mayor Hemelrich. My name is Erica Willhite. As a resident of Santa Monica for the past 29 years and an expert in motorcycle safety the last 17 years, I'm concerned about the three motorcycle fatalities we've had in our city this year so far. We can improve those statistics to reduce fatalities with training. I'm here asking for help from the city to help find space to rent on a non-exclusive, flexible basis to provide California Motorcyclist Safety Program public safety courses for the residents of Santa Monica. We're specifically looking for paved spaces 160 feet by 260 feet and free from obstructions and traffic, approximately one quarter of the size of the open interim space at the airport, to give you a visual of what that would be. We're very flexible and can easily work around other events. Our mission is to reduce motorcycle crashes and fatalities. We use research-based curricula, both classroom and on-cycle instruction to reduce motorcycle crashes and fatalities and trace those seeking licensure in California to become safe, responsible lifelong riders. Our training embodies multiple countermeasures detailed by the Santa Monica Vision Zero Action Plan to reduce fatalities. It aligns with our Take the Friendly Road campaign and it's flexible while we provide revenue to the city. Since 2005, we've trained over 40,000 riders in the greater Los Angeles area in the California Motorcyclist Safety Program. With your help, we can provide a life-saving training we are experts in teaching to our constituents. This is a real opportunity for Santa Monica to execute practical countermeasures to reduce motorcycle fatalities in our city. Thank you very much. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Willhite. This is the public portion of our meeting. This is, we can't do anything for you here, but I will direct you to call our city manager's office and remind them of what last night and give them information on what your needs are and I'm sure they'll get back to you.
Thank you very kindly. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Foster, did you, oh, there you are. You moved.
John, begin. Home bridge, what a great word. That's so funny. By the way, I'm completely balled up here. I'm like, you had mentioned the Ukraine, right? And it, it sounds good on the surface, but really, I get in trouble for talking about this. I'm not going to really talk about that. The reason for Ukraine is to move Jewish people back to Israel. They have to have a legitimate reason to make them, to force them back to the Holy Land. That's what it says in, you know, in scripture. That's what people are having commitments for, you know. Big, big time. This is what happens on earth right now. And, and it's totally destroyed my life, my music career, this whole concept. You know, and I had to, I had to acknowledge your son. I heard, was it Harry? God bless your son. So now you're a military family there. But he, your son's fighting for, for Israel. The, the Constitution says to, to secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, but really what's happening is we're securing, your son, my family that I came out of, I don't have a family yet, but it'd be great, but the family that I came out of, we, we secure the blessings of liberty to, to Israel. That's what, that's what the Constitution is. Where it says separation of church and state, so you don't know what synagogue runs the United States of America. Where it says we the people, well, the oil industry doesn't share with us. The Dutch oil shell companies from, from over there. They don't spend that money here on us. We have a dying for it over there. My family quit out for this. I mean, I, I had to serve for 10, three years. I, I didn't sign up for this stuff, you know? So seven seconds left, the abortion stuff, you know, wasn't very happy about that. Doesn't mean I don't like you guys, but I would put you in jail for it if I could.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. So I, I want to say that we don't have any adjournments tonight, but I, we don't have any formal adjournments, but I heard this week that actually somebody that I was never on the same side with, Rosario Perry, a fantastic gifted landlord side lawyer who argued in front of this council and in court many times. I saw him. He was a brilliant talker, I mean, and a brilliant thinker in the sense that he really thought outside the box. There was no box that he couldn't think outside of. So while I was never on the same side as Mr. Perry, I do recognize that he was brilliant and he will be, and his light and his presence will be a loss to Santa Monica and we will miss him. So on that note, we will adjourn. Our next meeting is April 26th. Sorry. Our next meeting is April 26 at 5:30 PM. We'll see you back in chambers then. Thank you all and forgive us our sound issues. Thank you.